Well, good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. We're here at Granberry City Hall on Tuesday, July 19, 2016. It's 6:00 PM. We're here for the Granberry City Council regular meeting. I now call it to order. I'd like to call upon John Kohler with the Elder of Abundant Life Community Church to lead us in our invocation, followed by our pledge allegiance and our Texas pledge, led by councilperson Rose Myers. All rise, please.
Thank you, Mayor Hewlett and Granberry City Council. I am John Kohler, veteran of 29 years in Air Force. And my friend with me tonight is Robert Wright, an evangelist from our church. I'd like to start out with 2 Chronicles 7:14 tonight that we've all heard so often, but it's always rings true. If my people, who are called by my name, will humble themselves and pray and seek my face, then I will hear from heaven. I will forgive their sins and I will heal their lands. My Lord, thank you for Granberry, Texas. I have lived all over this nation. I've lived all over the world, but I am lucky enough to have retired in Granberry, Texas. Ladies and gentlemen, there are people, you see us, white-headed people moving in, coming from New York, coming from California, coming from all over, and we have a good reason, Granberry, Texas. There are people, America's in more trouble than it's ever been. And we're running away from that trouble and we're running into your doors, into your arms, and we're saying, "Thank you, Heavenly Father. Thank you for welcoming us to Granberry. Thank you, Mayor, that you start your city councils out and listen to the Lord. You let the Lord come into your chambers, our Lord." We need that wisdom. We need the wisdom, Lord. We need the wisdom from the being that created IQ. We need to walk that path from the man who made the trail, our Heavenly Father. So, thank you and let us, tonight, this will be very, just a very short couple of comments, our Lord, but thank you. Thank you for Granberry, Lord. And may we stay here, may America stay here. We've got dangers, Lord. We've got dangers, but with your help, our Lord, keep our back, keep our back, and let us stay strong. Our Heavenly Father is just one other entity I want to pray for, and that is our police force. Our Lord, our police are under such attack, under lies, Lord, just trying to do their job. Our Lord, stay strong, American police. We need law and order in this country. We don't need chaos. We need law and order, our Heavenly Father. And all we need is one truth to prevail, one truth, and that is to do what the police officer tells you to do. Nobody will say that. They'll come up with every kind of excuse or comment in the world, but Heavenly Father, you've never seen a person shot that was doing what the policeman told you to do. Lord, let that be published. Let that go on the television. Let that go on the newspapers. Heavenly Father, I've got nothing else to say except we love you and we love Granberry. And pick up this council, Lord, tonight, in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
It's a pleasure to see so many faces out there, even though we have a short agenda, but it's always nice to see people out there that are getting involved with the community. And thank you very much for coming. Tonight, we have a group of caring and appreciative citizens that would like to make a presentation to our law enforcement departments and our local fire station, number one. With all that is going on in our country today, they wanted to publicly make this gift presentation to encourage others to step up, speak up, and pray for our people who serve in these ways. I'd like to ask our Sheriff Roger Deeds, Chief Galvain, and Brett Blackburn, representing the Fire Department, to come forward, if you would, please. I think we're going to have Carrie Bellamy, right? Okay.
Yes. Just front and center. Mayor Hewlett and City Council, thank you for giving a group of caring citizens the opportunity to say thank you publicly to our men and women who bravely serve our community. Between the police and the sheriff departments, there are 170 employees. To the volunteers of our local fire station, number one, we also say thank you. Tonight, we are presenting to all 170 employees a Grumps gift card. Then to our fire station, 225 cases at 24 bottles per case of bottled water. There will be a letter that will be attached to each one of these gifts, and I'm going to read it. It says, "For your daily service and bravery protecting our community and for going the extra mile for the people of Granberry and Hood County. We join together to acknowledge your dedication and your service. Because of this dedication, we enjoy a more secure and safe place in which to live. May God bless each one of you. We pray coverage and safety over each one of you every day." The following businesses and families have joined together in saying thank you. Carrie, Chris, and Angie Bellamy with Edward Jones, Fay Landham, City Council member Gary Couch, John and Kim Erwin, Cindy Peters and family, John Lewis, Rich Merrill family, Mike and Donna Loder through Christian Brothers Automotive, Brad and Beverly Bartlett, Bob and Julia Pennell, Romeo and Judy Bishon, Mike and Dusty Scoville, Eddie and Mary Carden, Jean Kate and family, J.C. Campbell family, and then Grumps. We say thank you. We did send out 20 random emails, and we got 15 immediate responses to be able to provide this to you. So again, thank you, Mayor and Council, for allowing us to say thank you and to let them know that we have them covered in our prayers. Appreciate it.
Wow, I tell you, that's a little taste of Granberry there. I promise you. That's over 5,000 bottles of water. You know that? That's a lot of water, Chris. Now, thank you very much. It's well-deserving. We're going to move into our consent agenda now. The first item being to consider approving council meeting minutes of July 5, 2016, and the regular meeting in July 6, 2016, budget workshop. The second item is to consider adopting Resolution 1608, ordering a general election for the city of Granberry on November 8, 2016, for the purpose of electing a mayor, place one, and a councilperson, place two, and authorizing a contract with the Hood County Elections Administration to furnish election services, equipment, personnel, early voting dates, and all other related matters. We do this at every one of our elections. Also, number three is to consider purchasing new docking stations for the police mobile computers using funds from the police forfeiture account. And number four, consider approving ordinance 16-32, amending the budget for the general fund for fiscal year 2015, 2016. This is, as you read in the packet, for the Granberry TV upgrade for their cameras. Council, you've had an opportunity to look over all these consent agenda items. Are there any items at this time that you wish to discuss or pull off the consent agenda? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. I have a motion, Councilman Parsons, is that right down there?
Second.
I have a second by Councilman Couch. Is there any more discussion on the consent agenda, council? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. The consent agenda is approved. Next, we'll go into the deliberation agenda. The first item will be consider adopting Resolution 16-09, authorizing the creation of the North Central Texas Regional 9/11 Emergency Communications District. I'm going to turn this over to our city manager, Chris Coffin. I think he's going to call upon Mark Brown. Is that right? I think we've got a Mark Brown out there. And I don't know, I'm sorry, Mark, I don't know your exact title, so you can give that to us up there.
Mayor, Council, my name is Mark Brown. I'm the 911 program manager for the North Central Texas Council of Governments. Recent legislation came about at the last session that allows regional planning commissions, 911 programs, to change the way they're funded, not change the way we're funded, the way, change the way we get our funding from the state. Today, all the 911 fees that are collected on the wireline and wireless telephones are collected by the vendors and suppliers and turned over to the state comptroller's office. The state comptroller then turns it over to the legislature, and the legislature then appropriates it every two years to the council of governments for 911. The legislation that was changed in the recent session said, "If a regional planning council chooses to draw out of the state program and create their own district, they can, if they make certain criteria." First criteria was population, and that's, we make that deal. The other condition is all, every single governmental entity within that region must approve a resolution to do so. Now, why would we want to do that? The main thing is money, and it always boils down to money. Today, when the state legislature decides how much money they're going to appropriate, they don't appropriate everything that's collected. They withhold some. Historically, they've held a little bit, about 15% of what's collected. That's held in the state treasury, and the purpose for that is to balance the budget. Then that money is turned over to the State Commission on Emergency Communications for them to allocate to the individual councils of government. That state commission, over the last two bienniums, has decided to collect and keep some of that money for their projects as well. So, in a sense, what happens is the fees collected from our citizens are then held up at the state and then held at state commission. So, we end up getting less than what our citizens pay. And I can give you as many facts and figures as you want to on that, but the bottom line is, if we become a district, those funds all come back to the district without any collection. They're not collected by the state comptroller. They're collected by the people who, the phone companies that collect those fees are then remitted back directly to this district. This district would be governed by a local board. So, the decisions on where that money is spent, how it's spent, is done on the local level by a local board. The way that board would be created would be that once all 100% of the entities approve the resolution, those entities would come together in a meeting and then decide what the makeup and qualifications would be to serve on that board, and then work with that board to write the bylaws. Those bylaws would include, of course, terms, number of representatives, how the representatives are chosen. The one stipulation that the state made on that resolution is that that board must be two-thirds, two-thirds of the members must be elected officials. So, the main advantage is, all the money comes to this local board, and this local board then decides what we can, what we do with the money. The second advantage of that is, the state today limits what we can spend our money on. For example, today, only thing that that money can be spent on is 911 answering equipment and the network. We cannot entertain, no matter how great the need, funding anything else that's assortative, because then, as we well know, there are a lot more things that go on in that thing because all we're doing is delivering the 911 call to the center. That center still has to process that call. They have to dispatch, they've got to track it, they've got to keep records of it. And by law, as a council of governments, we can't fund any of that. The second thing is, we're only appropriated every two years. So, our plan is really two years at a time. Technology and everything else moves fast. We're lucky in this area that we've got one of the best systems there are. We can now text to 911 in our areas. We're one of very few in the nation that can do that. But trying to plan and run a plan on how you're going to support this equipment and grow it and keep it up to speed, when we only know what our finances are for two years at a time, is almost an impossible task. What we basically do is we create a plan every two years, and then every two years we change it. So, that's a really high-level overview. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Council, do you have any questions for Mark Brown up there or any concerned?
I've got a couple there.
Councilman Allen.
Okay. Two things, three things. Besides the city, who else is involved in it in our county?
In Hood County?
Yes.
Uh-huh. Toler.
Sir?
Toler.
Okay. Besides Toler.
We've got Preston, Decorva, Decorova, Granberry, Hood County, Lippan, Stockton Bend, and Toler.
Okay. Are we going to be a region by ourselves, or will we be included in a different one?
You'll be included in the same region you are in today, which is the 14-county, North Central Texas Council of Governments area.
Okay. Is that the one that, I can't get his name, but the judge over at Cleveland?
Yes. Up in Johnson County.
Yeah, in Johnson County. Not Tommy Altterius, but I can't think of it. Roger Harmon.
Harmon.
You know, we don't really have a vote on that deal right now. Is this going to make us doubter? I mean, we've got the judge that goes. I know we appointed a couple people, but we don't, we don't have the votes or, I don't know what wording I'm looking for there, to get anything done.
Well, today, we're, we work through a regional advisory commission. We, everything, we plans, our plans are then taken forward to the regional advisory commission. And there's, that's, I think, about a 14-member group, and the sheriff is part of that group.
I think Chris has got something to clear that up for you, Councilman Allen, a little bit, too.
I think, I think you're confusing the board for the North Central Texas Council of Government with the advisory board that he's trying to.
It's two different boards.
This is a 911 advisory board.
But we are going to be in the same group as both of them.
We are in the North Texas Central Council of Government boundaries.
Yeah.
Region.
Region. And within that region, they're trying to create this mechanism where everybody signs off where the money won't go to Austin, it'll go to this council of government for these 14 counties. And then they're going to have a local board established to make recommendations how that money is spent locally.
Okay. I mean, I like it. We're getting back free money. I love that.
Well, it's not free money. It's our money.
It's our money.
I like getting back our own money.
All of it.
But will we get it, or will Johnson County get it? I mean, will we get our percent?
You're asking good questions, and that board is yet to be developed, and those bylaws are yet to be written.
Yep. We're voting on something that we don't know what we're going to get.
But right now, they want to take it to Austin and get it to where they can even do it.
Yeah. And once, once they get every, every local government entity in the 14-county region to sign off on this, then they can start receiving those funds and create this board that will make recommendations. And Sheriff Deeds is on the advisory board now, representing Hood County and all of us. So, on that advisory.
I see Sheriff Deeds standing up. You want to speak a little bit on this, or?
Well, I head on that board, I guess the whole time I've been sheriff, and then I was on it hard for that one, I was far more. This is a great thing. We lose millions of dollars that go down to CSEC down in Austin, and they, they can send that money wherever they want to go, to whatever kind of projects they want, and it stops to get caught up to help balance the budget, like he was just saying, at the state level. And so, by agreeing to go forward with this, this is like one step at a time. We're taking it one step at a time. We've got to get everybody on board, and I feel confident it's going to, it'll all work out, and we'll be able to keep all that money that's from this COG, North Central Texas COG region, in the North Central Texas COG. So, we're working on the limited budget now because we lose a lot of that. In the future, I can't say that we're going to get 100% of the dollars that come out of Hood County, but I bet we're going to do really well, if not even better. There's a lot of good things happening right now. They're linking the system. It was fiber. Now, we're going to microwaves as a backup, and that's money that's coming from CSEC now that's coming and staying in the county to help us. So, help build that system and make it better. So, I can only see better things ahead for Hood County, for Granberry, for the North Central Texas COG, if we form this and move forward. Tonight, Stockton Bend is voting on it, and I'm confident it'll pass, and we'll get everybody on board with it. So, it's being accepted real well all across the COG. If we can keep that money here, staying here, and not going off to Austin, then we're going to win. We'll be way ahead. And then, we can, we'll have to form that, that committee to oversee all that as we go on, that board, but I can only see a whole lot of better things happening in the future. A lot of the money, like the Homeland Security Grant money we lost in the past, I can see where this stuff, this money might help us in the future for a lot of different things. I can't guarantee that, but I feel it will. So, I think this is a win situation for Granberry, Hood County, and the North Central Texas COG region.
Roger, did you say, or, Mr. Brown, you said that we could use this money for 9/11 also, right?
Well, primarily could be used for 911.
Yeah. So, like, we're paying the county right now, so we get this money, we don't have to pay you, Roger.
No, this, what he's talking about, what we're doing right now, that's the infrastructure that we have for the capabilities of that texting to 911, the microwave, the fiber, linking the system, to keep that 911 system solid, you know, that's what that money's going for now. But what the other agreement was for, the dispatchers to get it out to police departments.
You showed me. Okay, Roger, you showed.
I'm sorry, Roger.
I wouldn't lead you astray.
Bruce had a month ago. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor.
Councilman Couch.
Can you give us a sense what that 15% would represent? Yes, sir. In the last, during this biennium, the 20 million, $20 million, 646, $838 were collected from the citizens. Of that, 1 million 199,158 was held by the state. And that was for 1617. Isn't that a little more, like, 6%? Well, and it changes every year, so I was, it's a broad base. I was just looking over the last six, seven bienniums, because it changes so much every year. I can tell you, like, for example, in the 2010, 2011, the state withheld 2.5 million. In '12, '13, they withheld over 6 million. '14, '16, the state withheld 3.8 million, and CSEC withheld 2.6 million. So, and, and again, we just never know where, what money we're going to get. And we're trying to make commitments to build networks. If you try to buy a network and say, "I'll commit to it for a year and a half," you don't get very good rates. And one thing I'd like to point out, too, sir, this is a regional system, okay? All these 911 systems, there's 44 911 centers in our region. They're all connected, and they're all interconnected. And technically, they all have to be set up the same, so they all get the same benefits and the same services. Because none of us want to be driving, I mean, I work, I live in Ovila, outside Walks of the Hatchet. I don't want to have one level of service there and one level of service here. I mean, my kids travel back and forth, all of y'all travel back and forth. We want to be able to say, when we're in our region, we need what kind of service we're going to get. We're going to get the same level. So, they'll, there's no technical way to start saying, "Okay, you know what? We want to give everybody but this one this capability." It just doesn't work that way. We can put it out there and they don't use it. That's up at the individual center. But it's a regional system that really has to operate that.
Thank you. Council, any more questions, concerns, these two gentlemen? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well, at this time, I'll entertain a motion to consider adopting the Resolution 16-09, authorizing the creation of the North Central Texas Regional 911 Emergency Communications District.
Good move, Mayor.
I've got a motion by Councilman Allen.
Second.
I got a second by Councilman Mobley. Any more discussion, council? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. That is approved, that resolution. Our next item is item number six, to consider approving the proposed preliminary Memorial Lane site plan. And we're going to start out with Mr. Aaron McLean, our Parks Director there.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, City Manager. I'm just going to kick this off, then I'm going to turn the reins over to Ms. Julie Pennell, if that's all right with y'all. Back in March 7th of 2016, the Parks Board discussed the idea for this Memorial Lane project and voted unanimously to recommend the project to City Council for approval. And then, on April 5th, City Council voted to approve the proposed, proposal to build Memorial Lane. And now, we come before you requesting approval of these preliminary plans. Parks Board has approved these plans July 11th. And a little background on this, Memorial Lane Committee has worked with EmporTech, HIBS, and TODD to develop a preliminary site plan. The committee and the Parks Board believe that the proposed plan brings to life the vision to create an area to honor veterans, fallen heroes of Hood County, Sheriff's Department, police officers, and other first responders. The ultimate design goal is to provide a reverent space to honor the past, present, and future heroes of the community. And I'd like to read a letter, if I could. At the July 11th, 2016, meeting, the Granberry Parks Board reviewed the proposed Memorial Lane site map and concept plan. The Parks Board voted unanimously in favor of accepting this proposal without any changes or additions. The Granberry Parks Board would like to submit this letter to formally recommend that City Council accept the proposed site plan and allow fundraising and coordinating efforts to begin. While City Council holds the responsibility for final acceptance and authorization, the Granberry Parks Board would like to show its enthusiasm and support of the proposed plan and entire Memorial Lane concept. Signed by Jean Kate, Chair of the Parks Board. And I believe we've got some Parks Board members here this evening to support. And with that being said, I'll kick it over to Julie.
Thank you very much. Also, I would like to, for you to meet some more people tonight. The Design Committee, again, you've met them, is Mike Scoville, Doug Pruitt, myself, and Aaron and Sherry. I tell you, it's such a treat to be able to have them on a committee that you're working on something because you don't have to wait. Having Sherry on the Parks Committee and there at every meeting that we have is, has been invaluable to us because of her knowledge and her skills. We don't have to wait till the next meeting, so I thank you for that. I would just like, I'm not going to call them all by name, but everybody who is serving on the committee for the Memorial Lane in any way, would you please stand up? This whole front row, I know, and Sherry and Fay, Mike. Right, so this is some we have, and, of course, Aaron, so, so we thank you. I would like to begin, the Design Committee would like to thank Chris Hay, who is here tonight, and EmporTech, HIBS, and TODD for their time and dedication given to the committee for this project. They plan to walk with us through the next steps to get to the construction and needs cost phase. We cannot thank them enough. Could we give them a round of applause? If you had seen the scraps of paper I took to them with all of our ideas, they said, "But at least you had it all labeled." So, you'll see tonight what they came up with. The first presentation you have here is our official logo. We need to thank Tammy Hines in the Chamber of Commerce that donated their time. We chose this as our logo for the Memorial Lane. We chose this as our logo for the Memorial Lane project because we felt like the figures represented, they could be firemen, they could be men, they could be women, they could be military, they could be law enforcement. So we felt like that it was a very wonderful logo. We now have our Granbury Memorial Lane at gmail.com. We have a phone number we will be giving out. And so, and Tammy Hines is going to do us a website, so soon we'll have our website. And as Aaron said, our goal is to educate, because this is very important that everybody hear this, that Memorial Lane, which now includes the already established firefighter area, will be to honor all those who have served in the military, who have served with law enforcement, or as a firefighter, past, present, and future, career or volunteer. Within each site, there are areas set aside to be in memory of those who have given the ultimate sacrifice. Okay, the next one is an aerial view, and I know that may be a little bit difficult for you in the audience, but you'll remember when we first dedicated, the two sites were down further to what would be to the left, but with the insight and good advice and survey from Chris and the surveyor for several reasons, by moving them further to the right or east, we were able to give them more of a presence and make them a little bit larger that they advised that we needed. But also, it moved them, all of our park system, as I've been advised, is either under a foot lane or, aren't they mostly? And so, this last big flood we had, which was horrible, all the way down to the left there where it goes underneath the road, a little bit of that up to the gravel flooded, but up where this is has never been underwater. So by moving it that way, we eliminate, if it floods up that high, we need to get out of Granbury. So another beautiful part it does, it takes the, makes a triangle with the firefighter statue, so it makes a beautiful triangle between the three sites. So we appreciate their advice on that. Number three, this is Tears for the Fallen. We're very honored to have renowned artist Mike Scoville, not only on the design team, but he is creating our memorial statues. I promised him he didn't have to speak, but will you hold up your hand? We so appreciate him. She is called Tears for the Fallen. It will be a life-size girl aged 10 to 11 who is shedding a tear while holding an American flag and a law enforcement badge. Mike is adding a cross to the statue to convey it, our feelings of being one nation under The next one, Homage to a Compatriot. This is also life-size Labrador dog with a military vest, and I saw, he's working on it now, bowing his head to the Military Cross. And the Military Cross is, as you can see, the boots with the rifle and the helmet, and that will be something that we will purchase elsewhere because you can purchase those. And we'll discuss the exact location of these as we walk through. Now we'll go to the plan, and we're going to skip this and go to the plan. And up at the top, there is a dark area that you can see over to the right. That shows that all dark areas that you see are colored cement. The color is to be decided later. The other area that looks like Chris' cross are pavers. Doug, who is going to be working on our pavers, selling pavers, they were told not to use bricks, but he brought one that you can see the color that we're looking at of the pavers. And, and he, his investigation shows that the pavers, be careful and don't scratch that, that the pavers last longer than bricks. The landscaping, you can see by the designated area there. That will be under Aaron's supervision of deciding what looks and for maintenance purposes. That area now, as you can see in between the two sites, have a picnic table, and there's up there a bike rack. Those will be moved to further down east to the family area where the, the children's, the one of three in the world, fire truck play area is. So that will be the family area there. So they will be moved because we didn't want food being eaten and, and, you know, maybe carried over and set on the sites. So now, if you'll walk with me, and raise your hand if you have a question as we go through, please, and he'll answer. All the way back down, if you'll recall, we put beautiful fencing around one side and all back down for safety. We would like to include that fencing all the way up the other side, so it's beautiful and matches. And what we would like to do behind the area that, that would have the two new sites, for it to be either all stone or stone columns with fencing in between to set off the area that it's different and also for more security. And then on both sides, on the other side will be the fencing that matches the current fencing around the property. So for endurance and for visual effect, we are seeking a different type of fence behind there. Again, we have the triangle. Okay, and if you'll walk with me, on each end, as you come into the area, you'll see a designated area on the right side as you enter, like an entrance, which is a sign. It will be the same type of sign that's in the park now with the green with the writing on the bronze. Those will be entrance, you are entering Memorial Lane, and it will say what it is. So when you walk into that area, you know that you're walking on sacred ground. And nowhere else in the park or in the hiking back trail is there landscaping along that area, but there will be there. We will have two stone columns you'll see designated between the two sites. If you'll recall, at a catty-corner angle over at the firefighter, there's two beautiful stones that, with the bronze, that puts the recognition that needs to be who's the mayor, who's the city council, and then those who, like AT&amp;T gave 45,000 for the statue and those type of recognitions. We will have that. And again, the pavers are going to be used instead of brick because they last longer. Each site includes two of the new green benches that you recently approved, $1,500 each. That can have your name on it, Council members. And so we'll start to what would be your left, where the star is. That will be the law enforcement side. And we have Ms. Miller and her daughter here tonight, and we wish to thank the Miller and McLean families for their previous design work and fundraiser. They raised all the funds for those beautiful stones that we'll be able to use. And by their efforts, it enabled us, we're going to be able to more quickly move in that area. And we were very pleased, they turned in a sketch of where their heart was, and we were very pleased to be able to use most of their ideas for the fallen part of the memorial. For Deputy Sheriff Larry Miller and Sergeant Lance Lou McLean, both from the Sheriff's Department, we made necessary change to fit the donated site by the city and to expand the area to include honoring all law enforcement, which was their desire also. They wanted it to also say, "Thank you for all law enforcement." So we thank your family for your work and your fundraising efforts. Okay, so if you'll walk the star, as you can see, that's pavers. Up toward the fence side will be the three stones that will be shaped in a fan area, facing out so that you can read them and see them, of course, you can walk up to them. Then at the lower part facing in will be two green benches so that you can sit and contemplate. The statue, the little part on the side that has the circle, that's where the young girl will be. She will be raised because Mike brought this up, and Chris and everyone thought it was a great idea. She's life-size, but she's a young girl. And so we want to raise her so as you walk around her, you can look up into her face because to us, it's most important that you see that she's shedding a tear for the fallen heroes. Jean Kate, I know you're crying. The central one will be for the fallen heroes with the names on it. The placement of the other two stones, we're going to fall to the wishes of the family because in their design, they, they had them set up, so we think it's appropriate for us to honor that. In that area, the statue and the stones will all be lit from ground. We felt it'd be safer than falling over something, but, so they'll be lit in ground. And we know we have to go through certain procedures to make sure we have all that appropriately done. Now if you'll move over to the military site, which is the fan shape, as you enter that, you will see the back of the Labrador dog. And he's called Honoring, I just, Mike helped me, it just went away. Homage to a Patriot. Sorry, just left me. So as you walk in, you'll see the dog will be facing him, the Military Cross will be facing out. And off of them will be a section where the pavers walk up to a headstone with the Army emblem in it, with the flag, with the Army flag. The next one will be, I believe it's Army, Navy, Marines, Coast Guard, and Air Force. And they'll be in appropriate order of age, but each one of them will have their emblem in that headstone with a flagpole. And what our desire is, is that community organizations buy ownership to that flagpole and that, that flag, and will take it so, when appropriate, they go and change those flags. Those flags never looked at her. So we're, that's our desire is for organizations to do that. In that site, the headstones with the symbols, the statues, and the flags will all, all be lit as well. Now, we're going to leave this and go back to an important page. Do you have questions before we leave? Chris is here.
I think, Julie, you covered one thing that I had a question, and I think we talked about a little bit in the staff meeting, but, you know, the lighting would need to be engineered with an electric, and I think Aaron's probably already aware of that and going to take that on.
Yes, yes, we, we talked about that we had to make sure we had our ducks in a row.
Very good.
Council, any questions before she goes?
Yes.
I think Mickey's got one down here.
I've got a couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
So the, the new fence that you're going to build, is it going to run where the barbed wire fence runs now?
Yes, yes.
Does the city own the, own the creek bed running down through there?
No, I'll let Aaron.
No, we just own to that existing fence.
You own to the fence, and then the creek bed becomes our property, what, on the other side of the, of the rusty bridge on the east side of that?
Well, I don't know that we actually, yes, on, if you go.
That would be, that would be in city property. Who, I think during the rainstorms, we had some issues with the Travis Street Bridge washing out and possibly.
They did, they had, they had an area washed out, and they had that sewer line, I believe it washed a pillar supporting that sewer line out. So they had to have that pillar replaced, and they also put in some, some riprap in that area that was washed.
Yeah, I was going to say, who put that riprap? Is that city, city work on, because that's quite a ways into the property there, it seems.
The Street Department, I believe, is one, Street and Water Group effort put that riprap in there.
Because the, there's a lot of damage to trees and dirt all up and down, down the creek there.
That's correct.
So I guess one, what, the reason I'm bringing the point is, are we far enough away from the creek that we won't be washing our memorial away?
Well, we haven't had water get to that area, and if, and if you look at that, that site there, the elevation to these proposed monuments, I believe, would be the same elevation as that existing, as the parking lot or the existing Fireman's Memorial. The area, we're going to build this is level with the walking trail there, which is, it's all pretty level once you get up on our side of the fence.
On that side of it.
That's one reason, Councilman, that we took the advice to move it down, you know, further into.
Move, that's one reason for moving, good.
Yes, sir.
With the, the funds will be, come through the city and the city will contract to build the project?
It is our desire that the city put out no funds.
The city do what? I'm sorry.
Put out no funds.
But they'll be coming.
But it'll come through, oh, channeled?
Yeah.
I misunderstood.
You'll raise, you'll raise the fund, and the city will contract to get the project built?
Yes.
And then the funds will come through that?
Yes, the, Aaron will be the oversight, construction oversight on everything. That's one reason we wanted Sherry and Aaron on the committee, so I've already talked with Ava, and we already have accounts set up.
Okay.
We already have funds in it. In our next set, we'll show you how people can donate, and it can be tax deductible. And, and then all bills will go that I get, you know, for whatever I might get, which I don't know, it's mostly advertisement. I have to okay it, has to go to Sherry, she has to okay it, then it goes to Ava. And then, of course, we have to put everything out for bid, as y'all know, you know, for the other things, but, but every, all that's already been set up, yes, sir.
All right. Then in the future maintenance and the cost of, of the lighting, will that be, will there be some kind of endowment set up, or will that be a, a cost borne by the city?
I'm sorry, there was paper going. I couldn't hear you question.
Okay. The, I'll, I'll, I'll get on the, I'll get on the mic a little harder. This, this is what I got. So, so the future maintenance of the, of the memorial?
Right.
And the lighting, will those be expenses of the cities, or we're going to have some kind of endowment set up to do that? And, and also in that question is, what if there are additions made to the memorial for future inhabitants of the property, you know? God forbid that happened, but in the future, when we have to put memorials in there for fallen soldiers or for fallen police, will that be a part of the committee, or will that be a city cost?
Okay, the stones that the Millers so wonderfully raised the money for, we hope that it's never used, as you said, but there are, they have left space there for names to be added as far as law enforcement. The memorial side of the military is not by names. It is the, the Labrador dog and the Military Cross are the memorial part of that. So there won't be names added to that.
Okay.
So I foresee the only addition, unless the City Council chose to, would be names, hopefully not, added to that stone. So there would be an engraving cost, should that happen. And knowing this community, I could not foresee if we were to have a fallen police or Sheriff's Department employee not coming forth and, and taking care of that. As far as maintenance, I don't see there being any maintenance. We've talked through this. That's one reason they're placed like they are, so that they can mow around them, et cetera, that there would be any more maintenance on this area than you have on the Fireman Park or, you know, Hewlett Park or anything else. I will tell you this, when we raised the funds for the firefighter park, I was told it would be about $50,000 or $60,000, and it turned out to be $250,000. And we had money left over, which paid for the fire truck. Then we had money left over, which paid for the, the awning. And when we needed something, I went to people like the Ingers. Hey, we need trees. It's why we got trees. We need more fence for protection. We got more fence. So that's where we live. So can I tell you there'll be money for maintenance, no more than you'd need for any other park area?
I can, I can probably add to that just a little bit. You know, anything that's built in our parks, we, we ultimately end up, you know, maintaining and mowing around, just like the Jewel Ball Fountain, and then we maintain that, it's got moving parts. And then the other waterfall that's down there a little further, you know, we, the city ultimately ends up keeping that up and making repairs on it. And those, I believe, were built for, to add to the park system and our community in the past.
All right, thank you.
Hey, Aaron, while you're up there, and I think Mr. Parks was talking about also the, because all the bricks wouldn't be sold right at the beginning, and we would have to, as, as people signed up or bought a brick, would need to be pulled back out, engraved, and put back in, is that?
Well, the way that works at the Fireman's Memorial, they'll send the engraved brick, and then I'll go down and take a blank brick out and install the engraved one. That's the way it's happened in the past.
And the company that, that Doug is working with, you know, they recognize, they saw our plan, and they're, they're willing to, you know, cut those bricks so that the ones, of course, in the star part, you know, are blank, and it's so that they fit. And, and that's really a, a neat way to be able to do that. So what, what I hope is, is that it, it, it will definitely be a tourist attraction because, I told you this before, but I have spent hours, Bobby can tell you, on the internet, there is not a park like this anywhere in the United States. And when you add the fire truck with it, which is one of three in the world, there will not. not be another park like this. So we are not only adding a legacy for our grandchildren to walk there and see how much we care about our community, we are adding a tourist attraction, and we are adding honor to our fallen heroes. So, you know, no more maintenance than we do on any park that we have, Councilman.
Well, I want to thank you for your hard work, Julia, and all that you do for our city. Thank you very much.
Ms. Miller just informed me that there's already been things set aside, should we ever need that, that she's working with somebody that, at a very, very minimal cost, will engrave into the stone. So we thank her for that. So I guess I'd like to close with, oh, by the way, this is our official city receipt book, so any of the council members or anybody that wants to write a check tonight, we can officially take it. But the donation page, if you'll look at the bottom and read that across the bottom, that's how it can be tax deductible. Ava was very careful, and Sherri worked with all that wording, so that we could make sure that any check that went through could be tax deductible. You have to designate it that it's for the Memorial Lane Park, and that we can do that. So that was a very good, so... So what we'd like to bring before you is this, and we seek your approval, and to do this so that we can move, because I've got an appointment with Walmart Friday morning, and an apartment with Kroger Corporate next week, so we need to get it approved so we can go get money.
Julia, can I ask a couple of questions?
You sure can, Ms. Allen.
Well, luckily, you showed me the plans last week, thank you very much, I snuck and looked at them. But, so I don't have a lot of questions, but when do you think you'll get started tomorrow? And do you have a total price of what you, how much money you'd need to raise to get this done?
Chris, Chris, and we walked through, you know, the what ifs, and of course, our next step is the cost and construction needs. And when we did that, we came up with, now this is an approximate, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Okay.
And...
Are you looking at maybe a two-year, three-year project?
Oh, no.
I know you, thirty days, but...
So, and you got a copy of our fundraising plan?
Yes.
So if you look at that fundraising plan, we have awesome people that have taken each one of those steps, so, and we've already begun them. So you can get your tickets for the VIP night tonight, but, but we anticipate raising the full amount.
Thank you very much for your hard work, as always, but last question now, Aaron's going to be over this project, but that's not going to be on taxpayers' money, right?
Well, Councilman Tony, what do you do when he worked on the Firefighter project, or when he goes down and works it, on the skateboard, or when he goes down and works at Hewlett, or any of those?
That, that department's paid out of taxpayers' money.
Right.
I just want to make sure we don't get in trouble.
How?
Limit and wait dismissal.
Okay.
Because I hear it all the time, and I appreciate what you're doing, I'm behind it a hundred percent, but I get a call, you can ask Chris, when somebody goes to an opera house, oh, they're working on an opera house, and that, you know, it's not the city's property, I mean, it is our property, but we leased it out. So that's all I'm asking, if we got a crew down there, and it's something I'm discussing with the city manager, but if we got a crew down there working, and they call us, why would you work on my project? That's the only thing I'm saying, I think it could be some problems there.
Well...
Everything else, I have no problem with.
First of all, it's not my project.
It's not your what?
It's not my project. First of all, it is all of these people's project. First of all, it is your project. It is the citizens of this, because we are honoring our veterans that live here. We are honoring, so I guess you'd say that it's the veterans' project, that it's our fallen heroes' project, that it's the Sheriff Department's project. So I will be very bold, anyone that were to come to you and say, why are they working on the memorial, send them to me, and I'll say, shame on you.
You, you would, you wouldn't do that. That's what I, that's what I like about you, Julia. You always get me out of trouble. No, no, I want everybody to understand, I'm for this project a hundred percent.
I know you are, sir.
It's better sometimes to work out a problem before you have...
Absolutely, absolutely.
And thank you again for what you do.
Absolutely.
And Councilman Allen, it'll be no different than the fountain, the other things that they've built that was strictly donated by a nonprofit organization, and Aaron has to oversee that stuff. I mean, it's what we have to do to, it's on our property, and we're going to oversee it, and if we need to move a little dirt and this and that, and we're going to do that too, you know, help it out, make sure it's right. But that's just our participation, you might say, and our donation to it, you might say also, too. But it's well planned out, it looks like, there's probably a little more work to be done on it, but I think you've done a great job, Julia and Aaron also, so, y'all know you're working with, you're working for Julia right now, Aaron, so...
And Chris, hey, again, they have put in much hours, so I thank Keith for his participation in allowing Chris, and Chris has done an awesome job, so we thank them again for their participation in this. And they did it as a donation.
I think Chris Coffin's got something to add to it.
I just wanted to, first off, thank InfraTech for providing this engineering as much needed, and we cannot do a city project without an engineered design and electrical engineering that needs to be done and all that. So we appreciate everything y'all contributed, and from what I understand, you're doing what you've done so far, pro bono, free of charge, and we really appreciate that. But this is a city project, and the checks are going to be made out to the City of Granberry, and we appreciate the Parks Department assigning their park member, Julia, to move forward with this project. This was brought to us from our Parks Board as a recommendation to enhance our park. So us working on it is natural. It's a good fit, it's perfectly legal, and we're doing what we need to do to move forward with the projects that are recommended by the Parks Board. So this not only fulfills the need of our park board, but it also recognizes our veterans and our public servants that have paid the ultimate price for us. So we may have to replace the light bulb or a flag someday, or we may have to take some special care to replace the brick paver someday, but it's just like any other city asset. It will go on the books as an asset, and it'll be carried and depreciated out over a long period of time, and the longer we can maintain it, the better asset it'll be for us. So if somebody calls and complains, tell them it's our park.
Give them my phone number.
And the same thing, if we're repairing something at the opera house, it's our facility, and there are agreements in place for rent for that, but, you know, bottom line is, is we got to take care of our stuff, so we're here to do that.
Very well, very good. Counsel, you got any more question, concern for these two folks up here? If not, I'll entertain a motion to consider approving the proposed preliminary Memorial Lane Site Plan.
Don't move it.
I have a motion by Councilman Allen.
Second.
Second by Councilperson Myers. Any further discussion, counsel? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Thank you.
You are welcome, Julia, thank you very much. Our next item is to consider the proposal regarding the demolition and the removal of the rail car located at the Lambert Branch Park, and I'm going to have Aaron talk a little bit about that one to start off with.
Can I turn this over to Julia also, or want me to take your?
Come on, Aaron, do something.
All right, all right, I earned my keep. At the March 9th, 2015 Parks Board meeting, they voted unanimously to recommend removal of the deteriorated rail car from Lambert Branch Park, either by auction or demolition. City staff initially tried to reach out to other organizations to try to find a home for that rail car. A little bit of history on that car. It originally belonged to the Hood County Genealogical and Historical Society. Years ago, they had good intentions to restore that rail car. I think it's, I've been here thirteen years, it's been in that same spot ever since, I believe. So I read, it took me a while to find out who actually owned the car. I thought it was ours. But I finally got in touch with them, and got a letter from Jim Sutton, their president, stating that they, they had no desires or group interest or funds to do anything else with that car. And they gave it to us to do with what we want. So we have contacted the City of Burleson, Cleburne, Texas Railroad Museum, and the Museum of the American Railroad, but no one interested in the, in the car.
And the Houston Railroad Museum.
Pardon me?
And the Houston Railroad Museum.
You contacted Houston? There were several issues, the, they call them trucks, the wheels are not original to that car. They're just sitting on large square tubing, and then the box, the wooden box, just sitting on that tubing on the trucks. So they're not original. They've had attempted to go and do some repairs years ago to the exterior siding, the wood's not original, and it's just in pretty bad shape. So it's our desire and request to go ahead and demolish the wooden portion of that rail car, and then we can relocate the trucks and the tracks to a safer site and store them for either the next auction, or continue to try to find a home for those from someone that could use them. So we'd be glad to try to answer any questions on that rail car.
Counsel, any questions about the demoing of the rail car? I think it's a long past being able to take care of that thing, because it's, I drove on vacation, and I've seen several of them laying out in pastures, so I don't know that there are any of them that are historical unless it just happened to be one that somebody owned down here, but obviously it didn't, so it's, it's an eyesore that needs to probably go. If not, thank you, Aaron, thank you very much.
I've got a couple of questions.
Oh, Councilman Parsons?
Oh, some time ago when I was on council, we approved a master plan for that park, which included all the historical assets in there. Are we going to also scuttle the old news building out there, or has that, has that been talked about?
It has been talked about, there are no, there are no funds at this point to renovate that building, and Parks Board did discuss that in a meeting, and they did not recommend putting forth any, recommending any funds for the renovation of that building. But nothing else has been determined or decided at this point.
Okay. And the needy house, I guess, since it sort of generates money, we'll keep using it. And so will the rest of those master plans be scrapped then, because they don't really fit the park now as it exists?
We could definitely come back to y'all at some point, you know, we did eliminate the historic home site of that, of that master plan. That's the only adjustment we made at that time to that plan. Of course, you know, the light plant is there, and we have a, underway, we have an engineer looking at recommendations for, I won't say renovating, renovating that building, but just making sure it's safe. You know, we certainly want to keep that, that structure safe, where we can continue to have it open during events and demonstrate those engines that are, that are in there to the public. So to answer your question on the news croquet building, all I can say at this point is that there's, there's no funds available for renovation, and that Parks Board did not recommend spending the funds. I believe they're, they would rather see the money spent in other areas at this time.
Thank you.
Counsel, any more questions for Aaron, concerned on this one? Thank you, Aaron. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the proposal regarding the demolition and the removal of the rail car located at Lambert Park Branch, Lambert Branch Park, I'm sorry.
Don't move.
I've got a motion by Councilman Mobley.
Second.
And a second by Councilman Couch. Counsel, any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That is approved, thank you. Our next item, item number eight, is to consider an appointment to the Public Television Channel Advisory Board to fill a vacant, a vacant seat. As you know, we had a vacant seat come, I remember Thomas Patterson had resigned from the Public Television Channel Board, because he was unable to make all the meetings, had other things that he wanted to do, so he had resigned, and he was appointed to the board on July 21st, 2015, and he was appointed to fill an unexpired term ending January 31st, 2017. So now we have an open seat there, and we have got several applications. As you see, counsel, we've got four applicants for this TV advisory board, the first one being Robert Hunt, and Robert had put in for several other ones also. We got John Ray Childers, he had only put in for the TV. We got Bobby Jefferson, TV only, and Mitch Warren, which was also TV only. And I do want to say, I do appreciate all the applicants we're getting. There was a time when we couldn't get enough applications for a lot of our boards, and now we've got a lot of people waiting in line, and we do consider that, we keep them on file, so if you don't get selected this round, we, we go in and put new people on these boards every year, so there's always that opportunity. But I do thank everybody that takes an interest and wants to apply for the, now, because it shows the community support and the community wanting to help out in these things, so I do appreciate that. What we're going to do, and we do have, is there any of the applicants out there in the audience? I think we have one and two, so I think, let's see, you got John Ray Childers out there, is that John Ray, right? And who else we got out there? Bobby?
Yeah.
Bobby Hunt?
Bobby Jefferson.
Bobby Jefferson, I'm sorry. So counsel, if there, if there are any questions you'd like to ask these two gentlemen, there are out there, but if not, you've read the applications, you've had an opportunity to look them over. What I'd like to do is, if there's any, we're going to keep this open instead of the closed, and we're going to, if there's any nominations that the council wants to make, I'm, I'll open it up for nominations.
Mayor, I nominate Bobby Jefferson.
Here we have, we have a nomination by Councilman Allen for Bobby Jefferson?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, counsel, we have any other nominations? Well, that makes unanimous. If not, I'll entertain a motion, all in favor of Bobby, Bobby Jefferson being appointed to the Public Television Advisory Board. Say aye.
Aye.
I'll take, let's have a show of hands here, let's have a show of hands.
You need a motion on that, mayor?
Well, I was looking for nominations, I didn't get any more nominations, so, just looking for nominations, so we've got right now one nomination with Bobby Jefferson, and I'm going to ask for a show of hands, all in favor of Bobby Jefferson being appointed to the TV advisory board, say aye? Or raise a hand? See, you got your hands up?
We did.
Looks like unanimous, okay? Now I'll make a motion to the council to nominate Bobby Jefferson to the Public Television Channel Advisory Board, so I need a motion to go ahead and nominate him.
Don't move.
I have a motion by Councilman Allen.
Second.
I got a second by Councilman Couch. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Hey, Bobby, Bobby will be the new appointed Public Television Channel Advisory Board seat. At this time, we will go into the executive session. I'll now declare that the Granberry City Council is convened into open session, and all members are present. The city council will now go into the closed session pursuant to the provisions of Texas Government Code in accordance with the authority contained in the following section. Section 551.072, deliberation regarding real property, and also Section 551.087, deliberation regarding economic development negotiations. I will ask that Councilman Couch will be set out for a partial due to a conflict of interest. I think you've signed your sheet, right, Councilman Couch?
Over.
Carlos got it, okay. The council will now reconvene into open session. There was no action taken in closed session.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Parsons?
I have a motion, please. I'd like to make a motion that the city manager be authorized to negotiate the land required for an easement for the new saltwater treatment plant, based on an appraisal reviewed in the executive session.
Very good, we got a, we got a motion to allow the city manager to... We got a motion to allow the city manager to negotiate a property that is needed for the new treatment plant based on the appraisal that we have received.
I second that motion, Mayor.
I have a second by Councilman Allen. Councilman Couch, you'll have to excuse yourself on this one.
Can we step down?
Yes, please. Is there any more discussion on this motion? If not, Councilman Parsons, how you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Allen?
Aye.
Councilman Mobley?
Aye.
Councilperson Myers?
Aye.
Okay, that is approved. We will have the city manager do that. At this time, is there no more discussion, Council? The council is adjourned. I'm going to have you come back up and join if that's okay.